We have court, we have seventeen people. I'll ask our staff on, Mr. Fager will lead us in our prayer and say something.
Father in heaven, we come humbly before you Lord, singing your favor on these proceedings for all who are in attendance. Thank you, Lord, for the blessing that you have been in Jefferson County. Praise the Lord that he will serve her with honor, be with you and all that we did. Pray to forgive us, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I thank you for the love and the blessing.
Blessed are the agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we appreciate your advice, team, tonight. First item on the agenda is the appearance of citizens. We have employee Kayla Gabbard that would like to address the commission. If you would come to that microphone and give us your name and what department you work in, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Kayla Gabbard, I work for the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department inside of jail. As a corrections sergeant at Jefferson County Jail, I'm here to explain the extremely dangerous conditions that we are currently facing. According to our post orders, we are required to have nine people per shift plus two supervisors. I currently have four people assigned to my shift, including myself. After ten PM, I only have three people that are available for any help as one of my employees is stationed at central control and can't leave his post. We have nearly two hundred inmates in our custody, that is a very dangerous ratio. There are no applications on file to hire more staff at this time. A big reason for that is the pay that we receive. Why would someone come work under these conditions for the same or less money than you can make flipping burgers at McDonald's? There's currently no positive outlook on our future at Jefferson County Jail. I would like to please ask the commission, please take into consideration what we are dealing with. We don't just house people brought into the jail by county patrol officers. We house everyone arrested in this county, plus some inmates from other counties. We love what we do and love this county, but knowing that we can go elsewhere to make more money with less responsibility, what's the incentive to stop us at this point? If you don't understand what we are going through, please feel free to come take a tour of our facility and maybe stick around to see what we do, day in and day out, for the county that you represent.
Thank you. I have no other requests for citizens, comments. Breaks us to the one item that we have on the agenda. I believe we have a recommendation from the budget committee with a amendment with a attachment too. That would be the funds requested by the sheriff for the jailers at our last meeting. That would be a reflection of sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars from fund balance, if that's correct, to do what the sheriff requested of mine. In addition to that, motion from the budget committee is for the finance director to ascertain prices to do an employee analysis on a market study of all county employees. Is that correct, with the budget chairman?
That is correct. I think, I think Mr. Doctor is getting everybody a copy of what we looked at.
Okay. Coming from the budget committee, it takes no motion or second. Okay. Floor is open, if you would hit your request to speak button, if you would like to address this with motion. Or if you want to take this to make a read, that's okay too. So the motion is, so that you all can hear, he said, "I move to approve pay increase for the jailers as requested by Sheriff Coffee." Funds to come out of general fund and that amount is sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Second part of the motion is, I move that we instruct our finance director to solicit bids from outside professional firms to provide a quote, provide a total compensation package, market survey comparison for Jefferson and surrounding counties. Total compensation includes, but it's not limited to, hourly pay, rate or salary, health insurance, cost of the employer, retirement plans, employer contributions, and other statutory or fringe benefits. No action will be taken on county employee pay raises until county commission approves or denies a bid to conduct such survey. And if approved by the commission, no action shall be taken until the budget committee receives the results of the survey. Furthermore, no, no action will be taken until after rollover numbers have been submitted to the budget committee. Floor is open, any requests to speak? County head, sir.
I just think we need to clarify because it was actually a little bit more than a jailer, right?
No.
I thought it was...
No, I made that clear, that it was what the motion you voted on was what was presented last Monday night. It was a jailer. It is the jailers, four workhouse, two cafeteria staff, and litter.
Okay, but are those all jailers? Because I, in my head, was thinking jail or was separate than some of those. Okay.
I think the sheriff moves the workhouse people back and forth as needed.
Okay, just as long as they're all jailers, because I just wanted to make sure all those people were included, so...
They're, they're all, either that or support staff, is that correct, sheriff?
All right, I just wanted to make sure the support staff was included, that people knew that they were included, just so.
Mr. Scarlett.
I think that they, that you all do a wonderful job at the jail, and I know something's got to be done. But I am extremely hesitant to do anything for just one group. I said it the other Monday night, I, I think it's going to cause problems with the patrol folks. I think it's going to cause problems with landfill folks. I think it's going to cause problems with highway. I don't think we can do this in a vacuum, folks. I think we have got to address what we're doing, and we've got to go to a total compensation model. Our insurance is next year, seven, seven point something?
It increases seven and a half percent, so it's three point seven five percent for half the year.
Three, three point seven five percent is what we're going to do. And we, in this county, our compensation includes that. And if we're going to compare this, I'd like to see, and, and I know, I know we've got to be low. I know there's no question. And we're probably low all over with the employees. But I think we have got to compare apples to apples. I think we have got to compare what the compensation is, because Mr. Byrd made the comment in budget committee that he pays a significant amount. And I don't remember exactly what it was, but he pays a significant amount...
Two thousand dollars.
...of his check for health insurance and retirement. And, and I, I think it's easy to look at this in a vacuum and say, we got to do something right now. But I think we'll be remiss, because I think with the other employees, if we don't have some clarity with the other employees, and it may be that we need to say, look, we know that, that the folks in the jail need some help right now. And we pay, get you some money right now, a one-time payment, or a something to help out, until we can get this survey done, so we can get the people to stay and either hire. But I, I cannot, in all good conscience, vote for this thing with it just one group. And I'm, I've struggled with this thing, I've thought about it since last Monday. And I don't know the answer. I've called tons of people in my district and, and county employees that are, that live in my district are, you know, they want to know why they're not included. And I, I don't have a good answer, and I, I can't support just one group of doing this.
Mr. Doctor.
Yeah, a couple of notes. Just to be clear, this, the motion as presented does address the jailers, the things other commissioners addressed, jailers, litter grant, what Sheriff Coffee asked for Monday. And for some of the jailers here, it's, it's overall, it's more than a sixteen thousand, two hundred dollar increase. But Sheriff Coffee generously agreed to eliminate some positions to use the money that he currently has in the budget to apply towards these increases. So, in the net effect, as I understand it from budget committee, if this is approved, base starting salary or pay for jailers is seventeen fifty, and that puts them from about twenty, some of them from about twenty-eight thousand a year to thirty-six four. To the rest of the county employees, I feel like we got to do the jailers, because we can't afford to close the jail and pay the two point three million that we'd have to pay to have other counties house them. For all, if there's any other county employees here, one of the big reasons, I agree with Mr. Scarlett, we want to do fair to you folks and the county, every taxpayer. And this market comparison, total compensation survey will help us understand what's fair. And another big reason is the budget's already passed for this year. Now, in hindsight, I wish we'd have done this market survey prior to the budget. So whatever we do for, for county employees, the only thing we can do is what's available in, right now in current fund balance and what the rollover is. So if we make a decision tonight, or before we get rollover, we're limited in what we can actually pay, because the property tax is definitely off the table until next year, because county governments only get one shot, one time a year. You can raise property taxes or adjust it, I should say, up or down. And that's with the new budget. So we don't have opportunity to talk about that until the new budget, or until we submit a new, approve a new budget for next year, which starts July first, so... Lastly, I guess, by waiting till we get rollover, we'll know how much money we do have to spend to try to get county employees to pay they need and deserve. And it can be, if commission chooses to, to be retroactive back to July first of this year. So you might have to wait a little bit longer, but you won't lose any, because if the majority agrees to, it can be retroactive back to July first, just like we did last year when we did the five percent. Thank you.
Mr. Byrd.
Yes, one of the things that I was, the reason why he's agreeing with what, I agree with what they said. In the meeting, I did say, this needs to go every department. The sheriff's department shouldn't be the only one, every department. EMS is short people, because they can't get people. Sheriff Coffee said they're short people, because they can't get people. They said there's no applications, because they can't get people. Highway department, sanitation department, every department. And we need to do it all for the whole county employees. And I do know, where I went to the Patriot Academy this summer retreat, they did, how much was the raise that school board got? Because they raised even student, substitute teachers and everything.
And so they're certified, which is like teachers and things, at the beginning, pay went up twelve hundred dollars, from forty thousand to forty-one, two hundred. And then, so everyone got raised twelve hundred dollars, and then they had the, the opportunity to get more, increase depending on their evaluation scores.
Okay.
And then the classified, which is support staff and positions like that, the beginning pay went up sixty-seven cents.
Okay. Well, that's just what I'm saying, they got a raise. Now, we're getting, do something for sheriff, every department deserves the same consideration, because we don't have one department more important than the other when it comes to workers, especially when somebody needs a road fixed. That's all they concerned about there right there. That's important to them. So we need to do this for the whole county. And like I said, the compensation package, we, my, like I said, a two thousand dollars a month, we get, get ten checks a year, we don't do twelve. And I, it's just me and my wife, it's not family plan on their insurance. And that right there is twelve hundred, I think, no, eleven hundred and twenty-one dollars is what I pay every month for my insurance. So I don't know what we pay here in this county. And then you got to consider, you talk about all these people driving to all these other counties. Yeah, you know how much gas is? They need to think about that too, driving back and forth. I'm not saying we should pay less, I'm just saying, these are some, some things that people aren't thinking about, that are leaving this county to go work in other places. I have, I have before, and that's the reason why I have a car that gets thirty miles to a gallon and not driving my charger, whatever, a truck or nothing like that. So, you know, you got to take all these things in consideration before you jump and go to another county. And I'm just saying, like I said, that's the reason why we need to do that package thing. Do they want salary, do they want the raise? Because I know some counties don't pay that. Do they want the money, or do they like having the package and the money? Which is what they have, and we pay for the employee, right?
We do, so I do have a benefits package kind of information right here. So for our retirement, legacy, those that were hired prior to July of two thousand sixteen, the county contributes ten percent to their retirement. For hybrid, the county contributes nine percent. Insurance coverage, the county pays for the employee, the one employee, dental vision, a total of two hundred and twenty-eight dollars per year. Life insurance for the employee, seventy-three dollars and twenty cents per year. Medical insurance, the county covers one hundred percent for the employee, which can be a total of eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars per year. Or they contribute a portion as well towards the family coverage, which can be up to fifteen thousand, four hundred and four dollars. We also do accumulate vacation pay time off, sick pay time off, holiday pay time off, and we have a longevity incentive for the employee.
Okay, we do, we do that. We don't get dental and vision either, so I didn't even add that on. So that's even a two thousand, but that's what I'm saying, these are benefits that other counties are not paying. And the comment, and I understand what you're saying about flipping burgers at McDonald's. I'm a teacher, and they make more than I do, teach at school, some of them do. But they don't get the benefits. You know, a lot of that's walking off the street, going to work, that's usually not a part, part-time job. So, you know, they're not getting any benefits to do that, they're getting the money. But I've had that same conversation with my students, and they fuss about having to work at McDonald's. I said, "You're making more than me, be quiet." You know, flipping a burger than I have, you figure out the hourly rate of pay a teacher gets. So, yeah, it, it, there's a lot of things to consider. But like I said, one, number one to me is make sure all the departments get the same consideration here, not just the one or two. And that's all I got to say.
Mr. Flynn.
Let's make it real quick. I said it before, the jail staff is the wheels under the entire county. Because the sheriff's department's the catch-all for everybody, crazy people, mental transports, we spend a fortune doing that. You guys are irreplaceable. I started in the old jail here in ninety-eight, right before, when Davenport first came on. And Ricky, you came along, and we've lost a lot of good friends that worked there, it was a good place. But that experience, you don't take away from the troopers or from the city guys, but that jail experience is paramount to becoming a good law enforcement officer. And everyone knows you should start in the jail, most places make you, most counties do. I think you should get paid a lot damn more, a lot more than you do. Because it's a dangerous job, nobody wants to do it, and I agree with it. We should go have meetings in the jail sometimes, in the commons area, see what you put up with, every one of us. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you do. And hey, I used to work there, I got to spend some time in there a while back, there wasn't too many. But everything worked out for us. But you all do need more money, and it's impossible to compare us to Knox County. It's impossible to compare us to Sevier County, they have unlimited funds, guys, they have lots of money. Your roads, your jails, and your schools are always your most three expensive, most expensive things since I've been on here. And messed up in the jail can cost us millions of dollars, millions. So I think a few thousands worth it to at least keep you all safe, that's number one. You go home, right? Every night, every day. And your patrol guys will take care of you, because we're all a family, you have to be. City, county, state, local, federal, whatever. But it all rose on the jail. The sheriff don't come in for a week for the patrolmen, so what? The jail's still there. And you all do a great job. And I think we should give everybody in the county a pay raise that deserves one. I don't think you guys making seventy-five grand and more need it, nothing. That's just my, you know, we're real top egg in this county, in most of the departments. But the people that do the grunt work deserve the most, so thank you, and I think we should give you a lot more than what they're asking for. We can afford it, the school can waste that much, we can certainly waste this much on this, it's not a waste. So thank you. It's not a pet screen anymore.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Mr. Ray.
I just like to say just a few things. I spoke to several department heads today. Some of the most important people in this county are the county employees, the school employees, they're the heart and soul. As I talk to those department heads, every department head I talk to is hurting the people. And they really need an increase in pay, and I understand this. I understand that for the county employees, I understand it for EMS, for nine-one-one, for sheriff's department, for the highway department, all those departments. But the biggest problem I have right now is, we have a sheriff, and we have employees within the jail who are basically working two employee positions in order to take care of the citizens of this county. Our sheriff has worked with us, this commission, and came up with a solution. And I believe that the sheriff is the type of leader that can take care of these road officers and encourage them to bear with us while we try to come up with a sound decision to make sure the rest of our employees in this county have a livable salary. So this is important, if we do not pass this tonight, we are at the prime opportunity of having someone else come in and take over our responsibility. In just two and a half days, what we're asking for tonight, to take care of this situation, till we can focus on the employees of the county as a whole. And I appreciate that coming from the sheriff, because he took some cuts in order to make this happen. I would hope that every county employee would understand that this is something that can be extremely detrimental to this county. And bear with us as we try our best to push a request through to get a, a authoritative, sound look at counties around us, something that we should have done months ago, and come back to you and give you something that hopefully will make you feel like that we care about you. So tonight, my focus is on taking care of this deed at the jailhouse. And then, I promise that I will work hard to try to figure out ways to make sure that all of you are taken care of. We, you know, we're willing to spend a whole bunch of money somewhere else. And we need to make sure that we take care of the people that make this county function. Just for your information, Sevier County Sheriff's Office. Starting pay, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars to forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-one. That, that's correction officers, they have their specialized law enforcement careers. So that's what we're facing. We're facing, looking at other counties, and even Loudoun County, like nine-one-one, they pay seventeen dollars an hour. But that county doesn't have a large debt. So for the county employees, please make sure you examine what we're trying to do. We're trying to do it the right way, but we need to take care of this issue with the jail tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Carmichael.
Well, I'd like to start my comment that I amended Mr. Doctor's motion to put these two motions together for the rest of the county employees. That's why I did that, that's why it passed. Okay. Here's the part that nobody wants to talk about, nobody wants to hear. It's all fine and dandy for us to talk about money and pay raises right now, that's all fine and dandy. But come next March, we're going to talk about how we're going to pay for all this. So whatever this survey comes back in, you ain't going to want to hear it. And when you find out that your, your property taxes is probably going to go up ten to fifteen cents to afford to do this, it's one thing to say somebody deserves being paid, it's another thing to try to figure out how you're going to pay them. Now, I've been in business my whole adult life, raised in a family business. I know what it's like to run on nothing, I know what it's like to run on something. And that's why I appreciated Mr. Doctor's motion of saying, hey, we need professional help, look at the total package, and let's deal with this now, countywide. But just remember, in the end, everybody is going to look at a tax increase unless something happens. If sales tax stays up, we've been biting in to all the budgets with sales tax. Sales tax ain't always going to be, what, fourteen, fifteen percent?
Fourteen.
Fourteen? It, it won't always be that. Because if the market drops, so does the money. So we still got to be able to afford to pay this next year. Because next March, it won't be funny no more. Because you've done got your pay raise, and that's all fine and dandy, but what's going to happen is if you have to raise taxes to give everybody a pay raise, I want you to remember that services have to go up in the county. People in business have to raise their prices. You know, just here the other day, I watched a dump truck dump a load of rock out, and that was a hundred and thirty-five dollar surcharge for just diesel fuel. Now, that's a lot of money. We're talking about wanting to build a new school. I warned everybody before this budget started, I was afraid that this was going to come up in our regular budget, but it didn't. It, it fell through the cracks, we should have dealt with this during the budget and handled it right then, all the way. But you'd never know what rollover is till October. So that's how we got where we're at. You know, Mr. Doctor is correct, it'll be next year before you can touch that tax rate. But you got to figure out where that money's going to come from. Now, right now, the sheriff's got less people working at the jail than he did have. Would that be correct? Okay, he did away with positions to pay for this pay increase. Okay, at what point, when we put more people in jail, are we going to need to hire more people? You're going to look at new hires, you know? So we got to look at the whole picture, and we need to balance this act. This don't need to be a haphazardous thing. Sure, the employees deserve more money, but respectfully to the whole county, we got to figure out how you don't lose your pay, your, your pay raise this year, you don't lose it next year just trying to pay your taxes. That's my concern. So I appreciate you all listening to me, by everyone.
Yes?
On this motion, actually the vast of budget committee, we are running county payroll tomorrow, it's effective at the end of this week. If this motion is to pass, is this pay increase, we would not have time at this point. Payroll isn't balanced this evening, it runs first thing in the morning. Would this, would we do retro next month's payroll at that point, or what is the committee's pleasure?
You're the maker of the motion.
My payroll would kill me if I didn't ask.
When we look at the rest of the county employees, at whatever, it be October, whatever, whatever we do, if no one asks, I will make the motion to make them retroactive to July first, so...
Is this effective eight, one then, August first? If this passes, it would be effective August first?
For the jailers?
For right now?
Yeah, she's talking about sixteen thousand, I think.
Yeah, I just need to know for the jailers, do we go ahead and adjust their pay for July's payroll? We, we don't have time tonight to go there and adjust it, but...
Yeah, well, that's where I was headed, I mean, unless it's an issue with other commissioners. If, if we do other, other county employees down in a month or so, and we make, and I believe we should make them retroactive July first, if possible. If this passes, I'd like to be getting retroactive back to July first. Does that make sense?
But tomorrow's paycheck is what she's asking for.
Oh.
So in August?
Well, no, just whenever you can get it on there.
It would be August.
Yeah.
They get paid once a month, so, end of August.
Sounds like it's how you came to it.
Thank you.
So clarification, this will be effective August one, on this payroll if this passes. And later night, you can come back and make it retro. To July?
No, it's, it's, it's retroactive back to August first, but she can't make it down to July first.
Back to July first, but it would be on August payroll.
So August first didn't start, you know?
No, it's July first.
But you're going to make it retroactive when she came, is that correct?
Yes. At the next available pay period.
Okay, you understand?
I think so.
Well, you're right to say it, so, as long as she understands what you're doing.
Yeah, it was first.
August first.
I think it's, I think it's July first, but the payroll's already ready for tomorrow, and then in August, we would be retro.
You'd retro.
Okay, great.
Okay.
But still, thank you. Nothing's going to happen in August first.
Seeing no other requests to speak, I'm also be ready to vote. If you're in favor of the motion, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Mr. Frank, can you speak?
No, I don't want to speak. Just trying.
We just don't work for each other.
No, we can't vote, so we both. You want to speak?
Computer don't work, computer.
Oh, yeah.
Bun's dead, yes.
Pius is six.
Passes sixteen to two, two abstain. We have come to the conclusion of our special call meeting. And we both are joined.